Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Southbridge Public Hearing on the Six-Year Capital Plan and the Town of Southbridge FY 2022 Budget. Pursuant to Southbridge Home Rule Charter, Chapter 10, Section 5, Town Council shall, the Town Council shall publish in one-on-one newspapers of general circulation in the town the general summary of the budget and a notice stating the times and places where copies of the budget are available for inspection and the date, time, and place not less than two weeks after such publication when the public hearing on the budget shall be held. 10-8-1, the Town Council shall publish in one-on-one newspapers of general circulation in the town the general summary of the capital program and notice stating the times and places where copies of the capital improvements program are available for inspection by the public, date, and time of the place, not less than two weeks after such publication when a public hearing on said program shall be held. The, I announced on the May 10th meeting that we would hold the, these public hearings. On May 4th, the public hearing notices were sent to the newspaper of general circulation in the Town of Southbridge, Stonebridge Press, for publication. That publication did not go in until May 13th, which is short of the, uh, less than two weeks, uh, period of time. However, I have reviewed and had the Town Manager review with our legal counsel about the charter requirements pursuant for the publication, and based on their summary of the recommendations that we are okay to, uh, post the public hearing because the charter does not stipulate a remedy if we were failed to do that. Uh, they also provided some, uh, case law, so we're, um, on the advice of counsel, we are okay to conduct this public hearing and adopt the budget. I can just forward that opinion to any counselors if they so wish. On the agenda tonight, we have the Six-Year Capital Plan, as well as the FY 22 Town Budget. Town Budget in amounts of General Government $14,913, uh, nine, $14,913.30. Public Safety, $7,528,151. Public Works, $2,237.27. Human Services, $1,507.864. Bay Path, $1,233.96. School Department, $29,037,793. Sewer Enterprise Fund, $4,198,688. Water Enterprise Fund, $3,586,730. For a total FY 22 Town Budget of $64,242,379. This public hearing will be open, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Go ahead, Counsel Marketti.
We did talk about the, um, the fact that this did not go into the newspapers within the two weeks, uh, prior to this meeting tonight. So it's your ruling tonight that because...
What? It's not my ruling. We sought the advice of the Town Council, Legal Counsel, about, uh, what the Charter states. Although the Charter states that the notice of the budget hearing shall be published in a newspaper at least two weeks prior to the hearing, the legal consequence of missing that deadline must be examined. In appraising the legal effect of noncompliance with procedural details, you must consider whether requirement is mandatory or only direct, directory, and whether the asserted noncompliance is significantly inconsistent with or prejudicial to the apparent legislative objectives of the prescribed procedure. Hallenberg versus Town Clerk of Billerica, 360 Mass., dot 513, uh, comma 517, 1971. Generally, where a requirement relates only to the time for performance of a duty by a public officer does not go to the essence of the thing to be done, is only a regulation for the orderly and convenient conduct of built public business and not a condition precedent to the validity of the act. Kiss versus the Board of Appeals of Long Meadow, 371 Mass., dot 147, 157, 1976. With regard to timeframes for taking certain actions, if the legislation does not specify a consequence for failing to act on time, the requirement will be considered directory and not mandatory. McGuire versus Boston Rent Equity Board, 25 Mass., dot 8, Appeal Court 1951, 1988. For example, in Hallenberg Supra, the Supreme Judicial Court held that the planning board public hearing on proposed zoning amendment was valid despite the fact that it was held less than required 14 days after publication of the hearing notice. And so Holden, the court observed the apparent purpose of the notice requirement was to allow residents to attend the hearing and present their views, and that no one had demonstrated that their interests were prejudiced by the late publication of notice.
Well, Mr. Chair-
I can go further if you'd like on that ruling, but it's a legal one.
I don't know about those other communities, but I know here in Southbridge, the Town Charter specifically says no less than two weeks before this hearing. The Town Charter also says that we have to be, we cannot be inconsistent with the Charter. But, so that's what I want to know. I mean, if the counselors want to go ahead tonight, then I think maybe we should have a vote on that. Just for, you know, just for the record. For the record. Thank you.
The conclusion of his opinion, and this is our legal opinion, in the circumstance where it appears that there are alternative channels of communication and that no prejudice to any substantive rights, is my opinion that the slight delay in the publication of notice of the date and time of council's budget hearing does not prevent the council from reducting the hearing on May 24th, 2021, and voting to adopt a budget.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I did bring this to the Town Manager's attention long before May 10th, when it had to go in the paper.
It was not long before. We had conversation about this, and due to the amount of time to be able to get it to the newspaper, we still would not be able to be required to get the two weeks' notice. It was your assertion that you perhaps we could. However, um, the communication was sent to, um, the Stonebridge Press on May 4th. Unfortunately, that is the newspaper that we have typically done our public notice with for the public hearings for this, um, budget process. And they are now a weekly as opposed to a daily newspaper. So therefore, uh, if you, we're in a quandary because, uh, I had hoped to be able to make sure that we didn't duplicate, uh, the problems that we have had in the past. So, we're also up against a timeline that this budget has to be adopted by May 31st. And with the holiday weekend, we cannot then put another notice into having a meeting on May 31st because that is Memorial Day. So with that, Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. Could you just please forward that opinion to every counselor? And when did that opinion come in?
That opinion came in on May 13th.
May 13th, and it is now...
I did not distribute it because I held it for this meeting in case it was raised as a point of order, which it has been raised as a point of order. I had asked the Town Manager's Office to clarify what date that the opinion, what date the ad had gone into the paper. It was my understanding that we had hoped to make sure that we had made the correct date. It did not. The Town Manager did ask me if we should distribute it. I said I would present it at a council meeting because I am not in the habit of emailing opinions until I bring it to the full council here so that it does not get into the public before I can announce it. That is my decision. Okay? We have a, a public hearing. We have legal counsel that we pay money for.
It, it might, might...
I'm not sure who just yelled.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, it will not be recognized at this time, Mr. Spick. Hold on. Ms. Ryan?
I'm just, I wanted to, maybe that's a discussion for another point. But I, I would appreciate it if you have that opinion.
If I can hear you, you have to speak into the mic, please.
I would appreciate it, um, to have that forwarded to me and to have a discussion at some point about waiting possibly 10 days to let us know about an illegal opinion when we could have, you know, send questions and try to figure this out beforehand instead of wasting time here. Because I, that's just my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Duly noted. Any other counselors? Counsel Marketti?
Mr. Chairman, in 2019, we postponed the public hearing for the same reason. On June 10th, 2019, we postponed it till the end of June, so...
Because we could get the ad into the paper, but at this point, we could not.
But it, it did go into June, so it was not a big deal back in 2019.
Point of, uh, point of clarification, the public hearing I looked at this evening was on May 28th last year.
Uh, June 10th, you postponed the public hearing. I looked it up. June 10th, 2019, you postponed the public hearing because it did not get into the newspaper on time.
Mr. Town Manager?
Just for informational purposes, Section 10.6, 10-6, one of the charter says you have to adopt the budget by the end of the 11th month. And one of the issues that I did discuss with you, Mr. Marketti's email came in on the 11th, the day after the announcement. So that was less than two weeks ago. We tried to contact the newspaper, and they didn't get back to us to see if we could change the date and move out one week and still get it in within, end of May. And they did not contact us prior to going to publication. So I contacted Town Council to say, here's our dilemma. We either go forward two days short or we go into June. Either way, we're going to violate one provision of the charter or the other. Either we were short on the 14 days' notice or we're into June. And so he said this is not uncommon. He then looked at the charter and looked for any consequence, and he said this is the difficulty. If there is a provision that says you shall, but there's no consequence, then it can be interpreted as a may. And he then subsequently provided us with that opinion based on other encounters they had. And so I provided that to Chairman Jovan.
Again, Mr. Chairman, if I could, one more point here.
Yep.
With all due respect to the Town Manager, I, I let him know at the General Government Subcommittee in April that he had to get this in the paper two weeks prior to tonight's meeting. So he had plenty of time to get it in. And when I, I did not see the paper on the 10th because I don't usually get the paper, and we had a beating that night, that's the night it should have gone in the paper. That's the day. So on the 11th, I saw it was not in the paper. I think that that was plenty of time for him to get it into the telegram and gazette anyway. We could have, we could have avoided all this and had the meeting maybe this Thursday's. But he chose to ignore that, so... I, I think maybe we should just, if the counselors want to proceed, that's fine, but I, I wouldn't mind a vote on it. Just, you know, for, for that it's, uh, noted, noted on the record anyway.
Now, Counselor, I had conversations with individuals to make sure that this happened. Unfortunately, it didn't. I'm not going to discuss anything else because I don't do things in public. I do it privately. Okay? I had hoped, I had done my best to ensure that we followed every requirement of the charter. Unfortunately, due to the publication, it didn't happen. We sought a legal opinion. There's case law that supports the position that you can go forward with the public hearing because there is no, uh, it's an informational session. So, uh, for the public, we announced it. It was in the paper. It's been on our website. We've announced it. I announced it well before the May 10th meeting, but I'll yield to Counsel Lazo.
All right, thank you.
There's a point of order on the floor? Is that what we're talking about?
I think he, point of order because he, uh, I believe that point of order is the fact that we did not have, um, the date.
We have numerous things that are in the charter. And, uh, I know that I've talked to one of the, the head of the Charter Commission. Uh, there are a lot of things that, they're in the charter. Three readings are in the charter. The publication, I mean, we don't have the, the full press we used to have back when the charter was, uh, put in place and amended. Uh, we have a weekly. Um, we have, we don't have the, you know, the morning and the afternoon telegram and the WSO and all these other ways that we get to the public and notify them. It's in an era of technology now. I think that, uh, I've had this discussion with the Chairman of the Commission that maybe we have to start looking at a different way of notification that's quicker online or something. But I understand what happened here. Without throwing any, without throwing anybody under the bus, the problem was created. Now it's in our lap. And the way I'm looking at it is, I think our intent is what we have to go with, and that's why I say we take this on tonight and chalk this up to one that we have to learn about scheduling. And I, it's not the Chairman's fault. Uh, it was laid out for everybody on how this was supposed to go down. And don't forget, at the end of this season, the public hearing. And I know that it was taken care of properly by the Chair. It, uh, it fell short. And again, and a lot of times that it falls short when it comes to the council, we've dealt with parking lots and contracts. This has been a counsel always get it done. And I think at this point here, I'm still that Counselor that says get it done. It's going to contradict if we don't have the budget by a certain date because of a publication by a certain date. You're going to violate the charter in some way. Far as I'm concerned, I think the charter is, the charter is what it is. My good friend, Mr. Smick, and I have this debate all the time. And, uh, I'm of the, of the mind of getting things done. Maybe not as perfect procedurally as we'd like to, but there's human error here. We have, we've got to move on.
There was a, somebody asked to, do you have a question, Mr. Smick? Identify yourself.
Uh, well, more of a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Can you identify your name and address, please, for the record? Because nobody can see you.
David Speck, 145 Bridge Road. Now, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
I can. You've got two minutes. So go ahead.
Also in the charter, if you look at 242, where it says, "The council may enact bylaws and other measures and rules and regulations not inconsistent with this charter, governing its own proceedings and other matters pertaining to the exercise of its powers and the performance of its duties." Now, 99% of the charter is, I think everybody will agree, is process and procedure. Now, unfortunately, the last three years, about the last three years, uh, Town Council has stumbled on its process and procedure, especially when it comes time, uh, to being compliant with the charter. Now, even though you get another one of these wonderful legal opinions, we don't know what question was asked of that attorney, because you know how that goes. Uh, but it, it would just be a lot simpler if, you know, we follow the outline that's laid out for us in charter. Now, and if this, these kinds of things are going to continue, Mr. Chairman, what purpose does a charter review committee serve? Because if council is going to violate provisions of the charter at will, and I know, you know, you're trying to put your best foot forward, but we're still stumbling. But what purpose, uh, is there of having a charter review committee in trying to bring clarity and ease of government when we have a council that's going to violate the charter at will? I'd like someone to answer that question for me, please.
Thank you, Mr. Smick. This council does not violate the charter at will.
Oh, boy. Yeah. It's weekly now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smick, you are out of order, Mr. Smick.
Well, may I be recognized one more time?
No. This council does not rec, okay. I need to understand because I'm not going to spend four hours debating on whether we're going to go through with the public hearing or not. Counsel Marketti's raised a point of order. I've issued the legal opinion. The question posed to the, to the, because it was alleged that we know how to answer, ask questions. The statement of the issue, "You have requested an opinion as to whether a delay in publication of notice of the date and time of the Town Council's fiscal year 2022 budget hearing prevents the council from conducting the hearing and voting to adopt a budget." It's a pretty clear question. Pretty clear question. Specifically, the Town Charter requires the notice of date and time of the Town Council's budget hearing be published in a newspaper at least two weeks prior to the date of the hearing. However, it is my understanding that notice of the date and time of the council's hearing on the fiscal year 2022 budget hearing was not published a full two weeks prior to the hearing, but was published only 12 days prior heretofore. As a result, a question has arisen as to whether the council is now prevented from holding the hearing and voting the budget until a new hearing is scheduled with a full two weeks' notice. Short answer, in the circumstance where it appears that there are alternative channels of communication and no prejudice to any substantive right, is my opinion that a slight delay so that a notice of council's budget hearing is published in a newspaper 12 days prior thereto does not prevent the council from conducting the hearing and voting to adopt the budget, and that it's not necessary to postpone the hearing until a full two weeks' notice is provided. Counsel Lazo?
Um, just looking back up for a quick procedural question. I thank you for that explanation. Have you ruled on this point of order yet?
I've given the legal opinion. It is my understanding, based on legal opinion, that we could proceed.
So you're ruling that the point of order is not in order, correct? You have to rule on that in order for us to discuss it?
Yes. I believe, based on legal opinion, we are clear to go backed up by case law.
Thank you.
I'd like to appeal the Chair's ruling.
He wants to appeal the Chair's ruling.
Put it to a vote.
You have, I, I'm going to defer to you on parliamentary procedure on that.
Um, there's, the minute there's a point of order...
No, I, I, yeah, okay.
I'm just going to back up a little bit. The minute there's a point of order, the Chairman rules on the point of order, gives his point of information on why he thinks the, the point of order is out of order. We go back to the regular agenda. A previous speaker has challenged the Chair for the ruling. Now it goes to a vote. You vote to support his, uh, point of order or you support the Chair's ruling. Actually, the Chair's ruling. He's trying to overrule his ruling. So we now go to a roll call vote whether to appeal his ruling with his information.
So I just want to clarify, um, one thing. Counsel Marketti is correct that there was not a full two weeks based on the charter. However, legal opinion has. So therefore, I believe that we can proceed. That's my ruling. So there was appeal to that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so a yes vote would mean appealing the ruling of the Chair, and a no vote would mean the ruling of the Chair stays in place. Is that correct, Counsel Lazo?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
No vote supports the Chair.
Correct.
You say that again, I didn't hear it. So a yes vote would overrule the ruling of the Chair. A no vote would uphold the ruling of the Chair.
Very well, thank you.
The actual motion is to challenge the ruling. Challenge the Chair.
So yes was the, no was the, was the?
Other way around.
Yes, is in favor of the rule.
Can I speak?
To the, well, we have to vote on his appeal first, correct?
We're appealing the Chair's ruling.
Is it on his appeal?
Yes, in other words, if you'd...
I just want to say something on what we're talking about right now.
About the appeal? No?
No, there's no discussion on the challenge of the Chair.
Counsel Adam?
No.
Counsel Katrona?
Can I just get clarification quickly? Supporting the Chair is yes?
No.
No. Of a no.
No.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
Counsel Dow?
I'm going to say no, not because I want to support any of them. I want to do the best for the town and move on. We can't delay it. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Okay. Mr. Town-
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Town Manager, go ahead with the public hearing.
Counsel Steves?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Steves. I'm sorry. I, I forgot you were out there. No?
I didn't know he was here.
Thank you.
No.
Okay. Uh, eight to one. Mr. Town Manager, we'll start this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council, members of the audience, staff members present.
We've got to move the mic closer because it's up to here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, staff members present, as well as the audience here and the audience at home. As you know, I previously presented the budget back in March. Consisted with the general laws and the laws set forth in the charter. During the preparation of that budget and the capital budget, I met with the finance team, which consisted of Melissa Zawodski, Karen Harnoys, who is here, and also our assessor, Will Tenoyer. This year's operating budget totals $60.2 million. The town's capital expenditures, the requests total $5.7 million. As we've been working on this first budget together, I want to recognize all the employees that participated in this process, specifically the department heads, and thank them for their yeoman's work in this last year during the COVID crisis and supporting the community during these unprecedented and challenging times. As we wait the end of COVID, which is basically upon us, as we all know, on the 29th, this Saturday, the mask restrictions will be lifted. In June 15th, the emergency order, um, comes to an end. We have been working through these disruptions and the lasting effects of the pandemic. Due to the uncertainty we faced back at the beginning of this calendar year when the finance team met, what we started to do was look at a level service budget that was based upon many of the comments I've received from the council members during my first couple of months here, as well as planning for that uncertainty. What we did was we used the FY 21 budget as our base, and we instructed it to all departments other than what was necessary to maintain current level services, that there would be no new budgetary increases. This was essentially a needs-based budget except for contractual increases and other obligations that the town had. After which, Ms. Harnoys and I met with each department individually, and we went line by line through their budgets to ensure that we were making proper decisions in the best interest of the town to prepare a balanced budget. The proposed budget that we presented and that is for discussion this evening is a balanced budget based upon existing financial policy directives, prudent fiscal management, which includes the principles that one-time monies should only be used for one-time expenditures and sustainable budgeting practices. To maintain all town operations at current levels, the FY 22 budget relies on the projections of available revenue. The budget is based upon an established ceiling of revenue derived, um, from reasonable property taxes pursuant to Proposition 2.5. Additional revenues come in from the state in the form of state aid, excise taxes, fees, permits, interest earned, and available funds such as free cash. I do want to express my sincere thanks to the, the finance team, as I said before, Ms. Harnoys, Ms. Zawodski, Mr. Tenoyer, as well as all the staff that has helped prepare these budgets and my office staff, including Kim Ferrin, Yvonne Tortis, and Cheryl Ryan. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind sharing, and I see you did, we can just go over a very condensed version of the slide presentation that I put on. Just going to advance the slides here. Just not let me move the slide. I got it. So the budget priorities that we looked at in putting this together were education, public safety, which includes the fire department, the police department, DPW, capital infrastructure, as well as health and human services. The overview of the budget, this shows the increase and decrease of the individual sections of the budget as well as the total expenses. You can see that the projected FY 2022 budget is $60.2 million, which represents a difference of $1.74 million from last fiscal year, which is up 2.98%. The largest increases were in large part out of our hands. Charges and assessments, and a large part of that comes from the state, which comes from school choice and charter school assessments. Overall, if you look at the, the public schools as well as general government, we held our numbers down below most of the CPI numbers for the last year, Consumer Price Index, inflation. But again, um, we've been borrowing to take care of some projects, and the state charges which came in much higher than anticipated, uh, drove the numbers up. How is the current $60.2 million operating budget allocated? The breakdown, 48% of your town's budget. 48% of your tax dollars go to support the public schools, 2% to Bay Path, vocational school, benefits and insurance are 8%. Debt services, approximately 5% of your tax dollars, public works, 3%. Police and fire comprise 12%. General government and human services are 8%. State assessments and overlay, 6%. Pension and OPEB, which are your retirement and post-employee benefits, 7%. And the library, 1%. Totalling the $60.2 million. Along those same lines, the average FY2021 tax bill, we looked at that to determine what the breakdown would look like if we applied the increase. And that would be the distribution, again, on the same percentage lines, where your dollars would be going on an average family home of about $214,000. You'd be spending close to $2,000 on education and you could follow down the line, seeing where your tax dollars would go. The primary source of funding, we generate a substantial amount of our revenue from our tax base, almost 40%. Over 45% comes from state aid. Local receipts and available funds make up the balance, totaling the $60.2 million in revenue that we need to support our operations here. And because we get questions from time to time about the level of staffing, you can see, we have two lines and Dr. Valar will be able to explain the school. But due to the COVID requirements, he had, had to hire a lot of people using CARES money and other funds dedicated to COVID-19 to have bus monitors and additional staffing to maintain the social distancing and other requirements during school. So that's the unusual bump under the school FTEs. But you can see on the town side, the number of full-time equivalents has not deviated that much over the last five years. And most of the fluctuations on the town side of operations have been due to changes in staffing and our public safety as police officers, firefighters, and dispatchers come and go. Although this may be somewhat hard to see for folks at home, this is a more detailed breakdown of our revenues. These slides all come out of the budget presentation that's currently up on the website under the town manager's page. And I'm more than happy to share this information again from tonight's presentation. But this just gives you a detailed breakdown of where the revenues come from, where we get our cherry sheet information. It was where the state aid comes in. And you can see that we had increases in state aid this year. We had a sizable increase in our charter school reimbursement. And we could go through that, but I understand we'll save some of that for later this evening. I did a quick breakdown of the revenues just to show how things have changed over the last five years. You can see that over time, even though we've had year-to-year increases in state aid, we've had to rely more and more on our tax levy over time. This is a breakdown of the state aid over the last six years. And you can see the trends. We've been getting higher growth in the area of charter tuition, charter school tuition reimbursement, unrestricted aid. Our Chapter 70 monies have, have not increased dramatically and we've seen a reduction in our veterans' benefits over time. As I said before, the top slide in the teal color is state aid. We've slowly been seeing increases. But when you map that versus our tax revenue in the bottom portion of the screen, you'll see that although we receive increase in state aid, the proportions have been changing over time. We're relying more and more on tax revenue, which is in the gold, and that's been increasing as a percentage of the total budget. Again, I have a detailed breakdown of the expenses for anyone who has any questions. And you can see that some of the most significant changes happen with our charter school assessment and our school choice assessment, which have been handed to us by the state. And that reflects the enrollment in the students that are choosing to go outside of Southbridge Public Schools. So a quick breakdown, showing you the difference in the last five years. Education has increased. Our fixed costs have stayed relatively the same. Intergovernmental assessments, as I mentioned, those assessments before for charter school and school choice have been going up. General government has gone down a little bit, but we continue to spend a fair amount on DPW, police, and fire. And this chart is really just to show you for the last five years, the growth rates in our major areas of expense. General government, again, has only grown at 1.6%. The largest areas of increase have been in police, fire, as I said, and public safety. DPW has, the growth rate has gone down, as well as human services. Again, intergovernmental assessments, that's that those assessments for school choice and charter school have gone up, though. Just to show our tax levy, how it's grown over the last couple of years, our levy has grown. We have a fair amount of capacity for, if we ever want to do an override, and we have excess levy capacity at the moment of almost $700,000. This is a breakdown of your tax levy, just to show you where, where it's coming from. The vast majority of it's coming from the residential levy. Commercial, industrial, and personal property has decreased slightly over the last five years. And again, this last slide, or it should be the last slide, is a breakdown of the tax bill, just showing you where your average tax bill has been over the last several years. It's been going up as the tax rate has changed. But some of that increase can also be attributed to the fact that real estate prices have been increasing dramatically over the last couple of years. Part of this public hearing is related to the capital budget. Again, we've met with the various department heads to go over the, the capital plan for the next six years. And below illustrates that we had requests of $5.7 million. We did approve requests as we reviewed them, Ms. Harnoys and I and other members of the staff. And we plan to fund that through $1.1 million of free cash, some monies from revolving funds, $1.5 million in long-term debt. Part of that's for the paving management and other sources, including grants totaling up to the $5.7 million as mentioned before. In closing, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank, again, the staff and the council, you, Mr. Chairman, and the folks at home for giving me the opportunity to come here and serve the citizens of Southbridge and to put together this first budget. And I look forward to working with you folks this evening and going forward on future budgets. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First off, questions from the public on, if the cable can switch that to view everyone because I cannot see it? Questions from the public on the FY2022 budget. Anyone from the public? Questions from councilors on the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing then, Mr. Chair.
Are there any questions on the capital improvement program this year? All set. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public on either FY22 town budget or the capital plan? Last call. Councillor Ryan, you want to entertain that motion again?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to close? Roll call.
Councillor Adams.
Yes.
Councillor Catrona.
Yes.
Councillor Daniel.
Yes.
Councillor Dow.
Yes.
Councillor Jovan.
Yes.
Councillor Lazo.
Yes.
Councillor Marquetti.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Yes.
And Councillor Steves.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing will be closed. The regular council meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, as that is the time for a regular council meeting duly scheduled. Stand, recessed, well, we convene at 7 o'clock for the regular town council meeting.